This is the July 22, 2024 regular meeting of the Beacon City School District. Please rise for the pledge. Okay, we are starting with the swearing in of new board member Chris Line. Is that the proper pronunciation of your last name?
Yes.
Okay, great, sure. Dramatic pause.
I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Of the state of New York.
The state of New York.
As board member of the Board of Education.
As board member of the Board of Education.
Of the city school district.
Of the city school district.
Of the city of Beacon.
Of the city of Beacon.
County of Duchess.
County of Duchess.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Congratulations. Okay, now we're standing back up for a moment of silence for Elvira Butler, who is a teacher in the district from 1982 to 1997. Vicky, can you do roll call? Delayed?
Here.
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 Here. Matt, can you review the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Now, we have the open to the public portion. Is there a sign-in sheet up there? Would anybody like to speak? Oh, you know, before we get started, I do want to just read our brief policy on public comment, just so everybody knows. The Board of Education has established a single period for public comment at board meetings not to exceed 60 minutes. All speakers and meeting attendees are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice, as well as disruptive content, including calling out, will not be tolerated. Speakers may generally comment on any matter relating to district business. The president and/or the superintendent may respond to comments when all speakers have finished, but there shall be no further public comment or dialogue regarding the responses provided by the president and/or the superintendent. And we also ask that everyone keeps their comments to four minutes or less. So, does anybody here want to speak? Come on up.
Hello, I know some of you. My name is Jean Wong. I am a parent at JVF. My son is a rising fifth grader. I've also been past president of the PTSO at JVF and a current member of the Foundation for Beacon Schools Board, but my opinions are my own. Some of you may have seen the deck that I provided a few weeks back, and I'm just here to reiterate my support and hope for a more restrictive smartphone ban. We have been, Hannah and Devin and myself and many other parents, are part of a WhatsApp group where we've been discussing the many dangers and threats of smartphones, which I know you are all very familiar with. But we think that doing the full-day ban, and especially with pouching, would really be the best option. It's the way that so many districts, local to us as well as across the state, are going, and we think that that is going to be the most effective measure, as any half-measures, where the kids are still allowed to have phones at recess and lunch, will not really solve the problems of bullying and self-harm and all the horrible things that go along with social media and smartphone usage. And I know that there are a lot of complexities and controversial threads to this topic. It brings up a lot of discussion among families, but I think I'm confident that the evidence of districts who have implemented bans, seeing positive outcomes in academics, seeing positive feedback from the students themselves, who didn't even realize how addicted they were, will be powerful if we're able to educate our community a bit more on some of the benefits of implementing such a ban. And of course, the science behind crisis communications, when students are in a possibly dangerous situation and families being very concerned about that. As you all know, the statistics show that it's actually more dangerous for them to have their phones in such a situation. And with that said, the most recent developments we wanted to bring your attention to are a new program that the governor of Pennsylvania just implemented, $100 million grant program, where any school that implements a restrictive smartphone ban is automatically given $100,000 grants to help pay for pouches or other ways to enforce the ban. And so, we hope that if us, if our district and other neighboring districts could maybe band together to lobby New York state legislators to ask for a similar grant program, it could help us overcome the obstacle, if there is any, with funding the pouches themselves. And then lastly, just in terms of educating the community, I think that there are a lot of parents who are obviously very passionate about this issue and would be glad to help support any sort of digital literacy workshops and educational efforts to get people more on board and excited about a ban. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello, my name's Hannah Ramott. I am the mother of a rising sixth grader going to Rambout this year. And I emailed the board a little while ago with some articles about some current events, some developments around the cellphone issue in schools. And I just wanted to say, one of the, one of the articles that I shared was about Governor Hotchell's listening tour. And she's going around and meeting with various people to discuss what, to get input from local communities, from the schools, about what they think would be the best approach. And I wanted to make the request, I don't know if anyone here is in talks with Governor Hotchell, but if not, if we can request that beacon be included to participate in that tour. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi.
Hi there. Hi, I'm Greta Byram, and my son Orion is going into sixth grade this coming year. And I'm also a professional, an information professional with 15 years in the area of public interest technology. And I'd like to speak to this issue around phones with a few thoughts on some of the implications of a policy, such as that it's under consideration. First off, I want to say that, that we should think a lot about kind of the implications around freedom of information and civil rights, both through implementation of a policy that would remove or ban cellphones, and also in terms of what it would take to enforce something like that, including what kinds of monitoring or surveillance would need to happen to make this a reality. Because banning sources of information can be a bit of a slippery slope, and we could end up in a situation where we have to monitor what's, you know, what's on our, the bodies of our children, you know, kids might have to, you know, go through searches or checks. So, I just want to think about like the, the realistic kind of considerations around implementation. I mean, a policy is a pretty blunt instrument, especially if it's like a broad ban. And so, yeah, like I think there's a lot more to think about in terms of this. Secondly, in terms of how kids respond to prohibitions or bans versus being educated or learning about developing group norms, I think, you know, if our goal is to develop a healthy relationship to technology, then there are a lot of curricula that are out there that have to do with setting group norms around phone use and giving kids some agency and their parents some agency in terms of, you know, how we roll out sort of any kind of measure addressing, you know, kids' interactions with technology. A third one to say that, for a lot of us, I'm a single parent, and it's important to me that I be able to reach my child during the days. A lot of times, you know, we have to figure out what's going on after school, or like I will need to speak with him about something that's happening. And I want to also say that I, I think about like scary incidents, including, you know, you know, school intruders, where I would want to be able to be in contact with my child. So finally, I think that there could be, I mean, this speaks to the, to the kind of how do you implement a policy, implications around putting a burden on schools to do something that is, you know, difficult, complicated, involves, you know, parents' needs and their children's needs, and how parents and kids communicate, and how kids regulate their relationship to technology. So, I think, I don't think that it's appropriate to ask schools to take that on fully. I think that teachers are already under stress, and administrations are under stress. So, I think this is a much more complicated and nuanced issue than kind of the way we're speaking of it sometimes in terms of like a moral issue or something where we have an idea of the way things used to be better, and maybe there are old issues that are just coming up, and this is a new medium. So, I would just urge some thought about implications and the actual ways that policies would be implemented. And lastly, I want to say that as, as someone working in the field of technology access and also technology safety, you know, this is what I do professionally, I'm a consultant with HR and A Advisors, I'm a principal there, working on broadband and digital equity and digital safety, that I really am excited that my fellow parents are taking an interest here. I'm glad to hear it. And I want to say that the issues are so much bigger than this phone. The phone is, is a medium, it's a little box. The issues with technology have to do with the way technology is designed, the way that it quantifies children's learning, and sometimes puts them in learning boxes, and additionally, civil liberties, some of the implications of the use of artificial intelligence.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but time, time was a bit ago.
Okay, so yeah, let's, let's definitely have this conversation, but let's consider, you know, I want to know what the school is thinking in terms of the use of AI and stuff like that. So, I love this conversation, let's keep having it, but let's be a little nuanced. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Can I use a few more of my minutes since I didn't use them all? Can I make one more point?
Is that, are we allowed to do that? Yeah, we, we try to avoid doing a back and forth, but you're welcome to, to come to the next meeting. Okay, well, thank you to everyone for sharing your thoughts. Moving on.
Can I just quickly?
Yeah, do you want to respond? Yes, of course.
So, just to, thanks for coming and sharing your thoughts. So, I'm just going to lay out kind of a timeline. So, next week, probably before Wednesday, I'll send out a communication to all school families with what we're proposing in terms of cellphones. And then, it would, whatever we do with cellphones, it would revolve, it would involve a few changes to our code of conduct. So, the code of conduct would go in front, the changes to the code of conduct would go in front of the board for the August 19th board meeting. And that, when you make changes to a code of conduct, there has to be a public hearing. So, the board would probably either, you know, after that public hearing, would, would either accept those changes to the code on the August 19th meeting, or on the August 26th meeting, if they wanted to further change it. I think, just briefly, right now, during the summertime, I'm spending probably most of my time with our administrative team, because they're the ones who work during the summer. Prior to that, we were doing a lot of talking with teachers. And I'm more specifically talking about middle school and high school. We are really trying to work through a lot of the issues that everyone is bringing up. It is a complicated thing, there's a lot of different feelings about it. We do, whether we have this beautifully orchestrated by the first day of school, I'm not sure, but we really do see education as part of the component, trying to both talk to our students and their families about things like social media, stuff like that, and also just the phones role in all of our lives, including our students. But we're also trying to work through what one of you spoke about in terms of dealing with our kids, not having it be that we're searching, that we're conducting searches of our students, that we're sort of taking more disciplinary or more sort of us versus them type behaviors to our students. So, we're trying to approach this in a way that's not that. So, that said, we're still working through some of the details. I was on vacation last week, so this week, we're jumping into it again. We'll send out what we're proposing next week, and then there'll be a couple of board meetings before the school year starts. I think the Board Policy Committee will meet sometime between now and August 19th to have a conversation about it as well. And then lastly, you know, while I was on vacation, and, you know, ironically, or unironically, or something, I was in a place where my phone was dead for most of the time, so I did hear via, you know, some other ways of the government, that Governor Hochul was talking about some cellphone stuff last week. So, that's something we're also trying to kind of monitor, because if I'm hearing her correctly, that she is sort of saying that she wants to take the decision away from, from local schools and make it herself after this listening tour. So, that's just something we're trying to figure out exactly where they're headed with that, too. So, there are some moving pieces. We plan on updating the community early next week. And then, I'll lay out in that letter what I talked about in terms of timeline, too. But we really do see it, we do see it as, as, is having a big educational component, for sure. And, and also, not just our students, but our families, too. So, it's something we're working on. Thank you all for coming and sharing. If you want to, I, I've gotten emails from many of you, if you mentioned some curriculum or whatever, if you want to email that to me, I'm happy to look at that. And, you know, people can keep emailing us as well. But that's my update on it for now. It's not on the board agenda tonight, but will be in August.
All right, great, thank you. I appreciate that. So, we're moving on to the workshop. So, you are, Matt, you're going to go over a capital project update and also preview changes to the strategic plan? Is that part of it?
A little bit.
Little bit, all right.
All right. So, I want to, is it, it's not quite midsummer, I want to give an update on where we are with the capital project. This is, you know, involving every single one of our schools, so I just want to give an update on each school, where we are, some things that have come up, both positive and challenges, and kind of where we stand. I'll start with this. Everything appears to be on track right now, which is great, like in terms of timeline. We don't have students reporting until Wednesday, the Wednesday after Labor Day, which was purposeful. We are trying to plan for, our first staff day is the Thursday before Labor Day. We're trying to plan for that either being virtual or in person, depending if our buildings are ready, but things are on track. People may have noticed, literally, the second students and staff were out of the schools, that our different contractors were moving in very quickly, that was very pleasing for me to see. I, I kind of gained like that when my son was four or five, and he was obsessed with, you know, excavators and whatnot, I felt that same excitement, seeing them come in right on time. I saw some working on a Saturday the other day, and I got excited by that. So, so, you know, these folks do this, and they're really aware of the timeline, and they're trying to get done, too. So, what I will do is, I'll just do a quick reminder of what we're doing in each school. As I go through it, then I'll just talk about a couple of things that have come up in some of the schools that we've been working on. So, all right, South Avenue. So, and these are just some pictures that staff took over toward the end of last week, while I was away, pit of South Avenue. We're doing front loop and sidewalk reconstruction, playground upgrades, ventilation, ventilation upgrades in the small offices adjacent to the gym, and upgrading lighting and ceiling and corridor in the stairwell. One really great thing that's happened at South Ave is the contractor that we have, the, what kind of contractor, what do they call it, paving contractor? They're more than that. Site. Site, our site worker contractor, that's for South. We have some different contractors working on different buildings, decided to, I mean, obviously, after a conversation with us, they decide to take a chance on the field that's behind the school and see how much rock they could dig out. And they brought in some special machinery that they have, and so they feel they can get two feet of rock out of that backfield. And we've been stockpiling some dirt, that's my technical term for it. And we are going to, once they get rid of all that rock, I'm talking about that little grassy area behind the school next to the playground, we are going to fill it and put some topsoil down and see if we can grow some grass. A lot of contractors said they couldn't figure out how to do this. This particular contractor, we feel really lucky that they're the ones that got South, and they have been successful so far in trying to remove that rock. So, we're not completely sure about the grass growing, that's a whole nother challenge, but getting rid of that rock is a start. And that was something that was not totally in the plan to update you all on. So, we're starting with some good news with that, and then things have just been moving on schedule for South in terms of, and that's a picture of that front entryway, which is all, or the front driveway, which is all dug up, and the stairwell, ceiling, and lighting that they're doing. Sargent, the main thing we're doing at Sargent is the new library media center. They've done all the demo on this one thing, and you'll hear this as a little bit of refrain in a couple of other of our schools. Some more asbestos was discovered, so the main school we were doing asbestos removal was Glenham. That's all been removed, but we also, in this work, uncovered some asbestos, so it slowed things down a little bit. Sargent is one of the schools where we had, had to do some asbestos removal. But, all that being said, they're still not anticipating it being an issue with the overall timeline. Glenham has a lot going on, these pictures don't capture it, but we are doing a new front entryway to the school, we're doing new lighting and ceilings in the hallways, we're also doing an additional parking lot and a totally redone, which I don't have a picture of, you know, like drive into the school. Yeah, that's it. And I mentioned Glenham, we had already identified asbestos removal that needed to happen this summer, and it's already taken place. Forestal, it's gotten quite a bit more dug out since that picture was taken, but what's happening at Forestal, we're getting HVAC upgrades in most of the classrooms, you see a classroom there with the old unit ventilator taken out. So, two updates with Forestal, the unit ventilator, these things are just the hardest things in the world to order. We continually have issues with them, they're a little bit delayed. Right now, they're saying the unit ventilators will be in early September. So, it sounds like we won't be able to install them before the beginning of the school year. That said, they're going to put casework in and, and have all the classrooms ready to go for the first day of school, and then they'll just be installing the unit ventilators at night. Forestal is also a school, along with Sargent, that we just, that they discovered some asbestos in this work, so there's had to, there had to be some asbestos removal this summer. I, I need to be clear, all of our buildings, offices have been in the high school all summer. We have, you know, the only people in the buildings are the contractors working on it. They follow with asbestos all the regulations and laws.
When you say it was discovered, I mean, it was discovered behind tiles or not somewhere?
Yeah, it was, none, none of it was viable, none of it was affecting anyone who was in the building at any point. It's usually, I think at Forestal, it was around some pipe, some pipes that kind of, once they pulled the unit ventilators out, but all of it's intact. None of it was loose or a danger to anyone. If we discover it, just like any project, then you have to do the protocol to remove it. Yeah, so there's never been a issue or a danger with that. The other thing, and this is quite a, the, Forestal has two playgrounds, an upper and a lower. We're adding a low, a, a nice piece to the lower playground. We also wanted to make it accessible for both students and staff who have accessibility issues. So, we're building, it's a pretty steep hill to get down there, so they are building a path that meets ADA requirements, and so there's quite a lot of digging going on right now at Forestal to make this path, so everyone can access that playground down there. So, so that's, that's, that's quite a, quite a project that's going on right now at Forestal. So, I mentioned, they also, Forestal also has their whole parking lot dug up, that's all on track, and also that front driveway before the school is completely dug up right now, too. There were some concerns, we have those beautiful trees in that lower playground area, there was some concern about the work impacting those trees, so the work right around those trees, we've halted. Our engineering and architecture company, Tetra Tech, is bringing an arborist in, and they'll be looking at both those trees, just to make sure the furthering of this work doesn't impact those trees. But the playground, the new piece of playground equipment for the lower playground is set to be right around there, like kind of underneath the trees. All right. Roundabout Middle School, unfortunately, I just have one picture, but we have two new art rooms being renovated and two new science rooms. This is one of the art rooms that got gutted and is getting a complete renovation, so these are big projects at Roundabout. Roundabout is the last school where some asbestos was uncovered, again, like the other schools. It wasn't an issue for students or staff, it was all intact, but in the demo, they discovered it and had to go through an asbestos protocol for that. Roundabout also has some unit ventilators going in, an air handler replacement in the music department, corridor lighting and ceiling replacements, some of the hallways, roof replacement over the gymnasium lobby, an electrical service upgrade, and a grease trap put into the kitchen. And so, so Roundabout has quite a bit going on as well, but that's also on track. Beacon High School has two science classroom upgrades. What you see on the picture on the left is what we basic, we're doing a little bit more than this, where we're adding water to some classrooms, so some of the science classrooms did not have water, so that's digging out to put water access to those classrooms. We're doing TV studio upgrades, you're seeing the initial work on that in the middle picture. And because we're doing grease traps in so many of our kitchens, we had to get a picture of one of them, and that's the high school kitchen right there on the right, that's the grease trap going in, that's, it involves quite more work and time than what we'd think to put that in, it's a pretty big project, so, so that's happening as well. Also with Beacon High School, you know, down the road is the track. The track's been closed off to the community and our students since late May. What they're doing right now with the track is they're working on all of the, like the long jump, high jump, like all of the.
Field events?
Thank you, the field events. The Olympics are coming up, I need to get this in my head. They're, they need to get all that done before they finish the oval part of the track. So, it may look like things are moving slowly with the track, but it's simply because they're trying to get all of the side things done before they, the last thing they'll do is put the oval track together. So, any other notes here? At, back to Glenham, we did have to work with the town of Fishkill in moving a fire hydrant and the, you know, all of like the driveway and parking lot work that was going on, so thanks to them for making that pretty workable for us. But like I said, on, today is July 22nd, things are on target, on track. We are excited about unveiling all of this to the, our student staff, to you all at the end of August, early September. That is the update, are there any questions about anything that you want? I may not be able to answer them, but I could take it back to the team and answer it that way.
Just exciting to see this work happening and.
Are the other parts of the, like, is the, like, I know there's a big playground.
are the other parts of the, like, is the, like, I know there's a big playground thing, structure that was gonna go in at South, is that happening?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, that was maybe something I forgot to mention. South Avenue has the two playground pieces going into the back. Forestal has one on the upper and a bigger one on the lower. Those are very exciting new pieces. In the next capital project, we are going to be adding pieces to Sargent and Glenham, too. I think it's important, this playground equipment is getting so expensive, you can't really fundraise for it anymore, it just doesn't make sense. So we're going to try to keep upgrading playgrounds through capital projects as we go. I, you know, I know this is sometimes not the most exciting stuff in the world, but I came back from vacation hearing the news of the rock being dug out behind South. And we're going to attempt to go grass, and I, I know that may not be exciting to a lot of people, but we've been spending a lot of time, like, trying to figure out what to do back there. And to hear that there's at least some possibility right now is really exciting. There'll be other things we get excited about, but like the, that particular site contractor, their willingness to try some stuff was really great. So what I'll, just in terms of community, I will piece this a little bit together, a little bit like in a more readable fashion, and I'll put it out and update the community later this week. And then we'll just kind of on a, probably every two week thing this summer, just keep updating on the capital project, so people know progress. We'll do a little bit on social media as well. And then as we get closer to the end of the summer is probably when more updates will be coming out, just in terms of like, especially to staff accessing buildings. We know elementary teachers like to get in to their classrooms before the school year starts. And there will probably be some challenges around that, so we want to work through all of that. So that part, and then when we get to maybe board business, I do have potential dates for the facilities committee to meet, and I can go over those tonight, too. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next we have some changes to the agenda. So reviewing the agenda, agenda items 12.05 and 12.06. One person has, needs to be removed from both lists. Kaitlin Lowe. I don't know if that's happened yet. I was, I looked at it earlier. Yeah, it's, it's crossed out now. Okay, good. And then the only other thing is agenda item 14.01 for EBL coaching was removed from the agenda. They will not be providing services in the district this school year. And I think that's it, right, Vicki? Okay, great. So can I have a motion for the board to go into executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? The board will return in about 30 minutes, does that sound about right?
Yes.
Okay.
It could be shorter, but
Maybe shorter, all right, great. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second by Semra. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, it passes nine zero. We'll be back in 30 minutes. We are back. Matt, superintendent's report?
Yeah, just a, a couple of quick updates. Between now and the next board meeting, I'll, I'll work a little bit more with Flora on this. We'll share with the board a draft board calendar for the year, and, and by draft, I mean what we think the workshops will be, at least tentatively for the rest of the year. It doesn't mean that we won't add things or whatever, but we, I have a draft of that, I just want to work through it with Flora a little bit more and then share it with you all. One of the things we want to do, and what we're working on doing, is try to drive the strategic plan a little bit more from the executive team. So we're gonna take the work that was done, which was really good over the last couple of years, and you know, the SAGI's Office of Instruction and Student Support will be driving part of the work. Heather's work in the PPS department will be driving that. Anne Marie with Facilities and Long Range Budgeting will be driving that part. One of the things that's come through in our internal audit. Am I right? The NAROKI? Okay, the internal audit process is linking our budgeting with our strategic planning process. So one of our goals with this is I, at one of those August meetings that I mentioned earlier today, I provide kind of the overview of what we're thinking and how this is all gonna work. You'll have the calendar in front of you, and then, and then September, we just kick it off right off the bat. I think the first one we're thinking of is to start getting into long range budgeting in September. In a board meeting along with like the committee meetings, to get into the instructional plan for the year, to get into the PPS plan for the year. The principals obviously and staff will be you know, contributing to this work quite a bit. I see each principal really, along with everything else they're doing, helping lead the community and family engagement part of, of the work, so that's just like a very thumbnail sketch preview of what we want to do. But what we, I think we did really well with the, kind of the surprise from Albany this spring. But we really want to start, like, doing more long range budget discussion here in board meetings, starting in the fall. And really tying it to long range goals of the district as well. So, so that's just a, like, kind of just a preview of that. We'll get, I'll get more into that with the presentation in one of the August meetings. I talked about, when I talked after public comment about just the, a timeline for code of conduct changes. We're making a couple other minor revisions to the code that have nothing, or don't directly, or not, aren't just completely about cell phones, maybe is the best way to say it. And so, you know, we'll be clear about those changes, too. One, we're adding some language around like AI-generated images and the harm that they can cause, especially towards students and staff. So we're adding some language around that, like, you know, just, just some things like that, that we'll share with the public and the board in the coming weeks. And then lastly, I'm happy to do this over email. But I, I have some possible dates for facilities committee, so I don't know if Flora, how you want me to do it, and I also mentioned if I can have the policy committee convene sometime between now and August 19th would be good as well.
I mean
Do you want me to throw them out?
Yeah, go ahead, let's, it seems easier when everybody's here.
The, the two best ones, we're sort of juggling, so we have a new architect from Tetra Tech, Garrett Hamlin. Which is a, it, it's a big change. We've met with Garrett a few times, he seems great. Garrett is primarily going to be working with us on the 2024 project, the one we just voted on, so I'd love the committee to meet the new architect and have, Anne Marie and I will be there, but have Perry and or Jesse, or, you know, one of them at the meeting, that, you know, their summer is a little funny. But Wednesday, the 24th, so that's this week, or Wednesday, the 31st are our top two choices, but we could also do Thursday, the 25th, Monday, the 29th, and Thursday, August 1st for facilities. Typically, we do facilities at six or seven. I think this meeting would be a little bit longer, because Garrett will be there, and what I've found already from him is he's really a relationship builder, and he really wants to hear from the folks on the committee, so
What were the dates again, Matt?
What's that?
What were the dates?
Our top two are Wednesday of this week, the 24th, or Wednesday, the 31st. And then we can also do Thursday, the 25th, which is this week, Monday, the 29th. These are all evening and Thursday, August 1st.
I just know the, I'm going on vacation on Wednesday, so this week wouldn't be good.
Okay.
The 29th, 31st, or 1st are fine.
29th works for me.
I'm gone that entire week, but I could join by Zoom or audio. Can we do that for committee?
Yeah, sure, why not?
The 30th or the, or the 1st would be, were those the other two choices? Would be better for me. Or no, actually
I don't have the 30th.
29th, 31st, or the 1st?
Oh, yeah, the 31st or the 1st would be best.
And I need to be there as well, right, as the president?
Technically.
Okay. I mean, the 1st is the Dutchess County School Board meeting, and I can't do Wednesday.
It is?
Thursday, the 1st. Oh, wait, you know what? No, that's a legacy in my calendar. So I can't do Wednesdays, if, so if, if you need me to be there, Wednesday's not gonna work. But I could do the 1st. Or the 25th, or the 29th.
Eric or Anthony?
So are you looking for one meeting?
Yeah, just one of these, yeah.
What's left?
The 1st.
Sounds like the 1st.
What time would that be?
The time is up to you all, six, seven, either?
Either is fine.
Six is, can we do six?
Six is best.
Okay.
So Thursday, August 1st is six?
Okay.
Six.
That's perfect. So at the meeting, we will do, you know, kind of where we stand with the current capital project. And then we'll spend time talking about the new one, because Garrett really wants to start working on, you know, on building that, too. Or designing. And then policy, I am trying to take off the week of August. I think it's August 4th or 5th. But for the policy folks, there's still a lot of different flexibility about when I can meet. Before the 19th.
Before the 19th?
Yeah.
Should we work that out now also, or?
I think so. I think it makes sense because everybody's here.
So that's Alina, Levon, and me, or policy?
I think so.
I can do the week of the 5th, the week of the 12th is a bad week.
I'm out of town the week of the 5th.
You're out of town that week, too?
What about, what about July 29th, that week? July 29th? This, this week, later this week?
Tomorrow.
Yep, I could do tomorrow.
Friday night, I guess.
No.
I could do a Friday. I could do a Thursday this week, a Friday this week.
I can't do Friday.
I can't do tomorrow.
I'm sorry?
The 12th doesn't work for you? She's out that week.
I can actually do the 12th, I can't do later in the week.
I can do the 12th.
12th will be good.
I'm confused. Don't we, we don't have a board meeting on the 12th?
No.
19th.
The 12th is good, I can do that.
So Alina, just pretend you have that board meeting on the 12th.
I just gotta think, I'm coming from the Bronx. No, it'll, it'll just do what it has to do.
7 is better though, probably.
12th at 7?
Yeah.
Okay.
I won't be there, but that is fine.
Okay, thank you all, sorry for doing it this way.
Is that it? Matt, is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, moving on to board comments, Semra?
I'll mirror Matt's excitement about the back playground at South, that's good news, and hopefully parents will have some some relief there. And thanks for all the comments, we're really thoughtfully thinking the board with the administration about the cell phone policy and the administration, so it's great to hear all those comments from, from the community.
Thanks.
Okay, Kristin?
Yeah, I want to echo that it is really great to have this kind of engagement around this issue. The one thing, and, and as somebody who has felt like this has been a very serious and important issue that we should have been ga, have been engaging in for a while. I think the one thing I would sort of caution around, if you're a part of this WhatsApp group, is I think if, I think it's a mistake to look at something as a win or loss. I think, I understand wanting to achieve a goal, but I think one of the things, I was very surprised by some of the comments I heard tonight, and it was things I hadn't really heard of, and, you know, thinking about a diverse district and the idea of body searches suddenly became something that I hadn't thought about before. And just something that we would really have to think about and handle very carefully. I think that there is like a large component of this that's like at home as well. So I do think that there's all of the things about, like, I follow Jonathan Haidt, I see all of his Instagram posts, I've read every article, like, we've all been sharing this stuff, and I agree with the, the kind of existential nature of this. I've also seen, like, honestly, since the Xbox entered my home, a change in behavior over Fortnite, where I suddenly have like, you know, I hate talking about my kids publicly in this way, but it's like, I've seen my son become really aggro, and it's not a, it's not a phone, it's not this, and suddenly it's like, it would be great to have real dialogue about this and have, like, almost like a parent university where we are talking about these things, because when my daughter entered sixth grade, I messaged all my friends who had older kids, and I was like, I'm giving you a time machine. What would you change about middle school? And to the person, everyone said limit phone, no social media. And so I took it very seriously, and my daughter did not have social media until she was in high school. And it was very hard and very lonely. And, you know, it was definitely something that I stuck to because I trusted the people who gave me that advice, and I feel like it is something that we should really talk about, and I don't, I think that like, the downstream impacts are like, if we're thinking about not giving kids phones during lunch, which I think would be something to really think about, we then have to think of things for them to do. Because there's not a lot for them to do in that playground. And it is like factionalized to like, the kids who play sports outside of school get to play all the sports at the playground, the other kids are sidelined, that's why they're on their phone, they're on their phone because they can't enter that game, because that's reserved for all the kids who are like, on all the travel teams and play all the sports, and I'm sure as a parent who like, made my kid do a digital detox because of Fortnite, and also had a deadline last week, I was like, oh my God, this was a mistake. Like, it shot me in the foot, but I feel like I can understand teachers who are doing lunch duty with a bunch of middle schoolers, really wanting them to be pacified and not going after each other, so I, I think that like, we should have a really honest conversation, because I think the idea of we've had this happen around other issues where people really come, and they're like, we need this to be this way, and they really push, and I think that it's had impacts that we didn't expect, because we didn't have a more global conversation about it. So I was very much in the camp, and still am, in that we should really do something about this, and they don't belong in classrooms, and they don't belong in schools, but I'm also a realist about what life is like for students in the building, so I think we have to have that conversation, too. And also, we have to have a conversation about what happens at home, because over a text thread, a group of boys talked about harming my daughter. And I have found out from a student, and I called all of those parents, because as a board member, I know that that would have been a threat of violence, and it would have involved the police, and that would have been traumatizing. And so I called all the parents, and most of them hadn't looked at their kids' phones. They hadn't looked, they'd given them this thing, they hadn't looked at their text threads, and then they learned a lot in those text threads, so it's like, the school can do so much, but you have to really be on it as like a parent, too. So that's my thought about it.
Thank you. Lena?
No comment.
Chris?
I just wanted to thank you all for welcoming me on my first meeting, so thanks for, for welcoming me, it's good to be here.
Yeah, thanks for joining. Levon?
I just want to echo what Chris said, this is my second, and I'm glad to be here and look forward to serving the board and the community.
Yeah, we're glad you guys are here. Eric?
Welcome to the new members, it's nice to have nine people here, which is great. A little discussion we had last year. I do appreciate all the work being done at the schools, I try to walk every day, I see a lot of the work going on. Matt had mentioned about the possibility of not getting back, about that the first day might be virtual.
First staff.
Staff day. I'm hoping that's not the case, I hope that they're able to get back in some
We are, too.
Okay. I'm just proponent of them getting back.
Not virtual.
Just, just if contractors are going to want every day possible in the buildings.
Which I fully understand, but I'm just hoping that they can get back and be back, that's all. Thank you.
Sure. Anthony?
Just like to welcome new board members, welcome aboard, looking forward to working with you. I do agree that there should be a conversation, I think it could be a workshop after the policy committee, you know, hammers out the details, and we have the recommendations from the policy to then do a workshop, so it's not just a small discussion or a new business item on there, so I would, I would welcome that conversation.
Yeah, I agree. Meredith? Yeah, I agree. Meredith?
I wanted to let everyone know that I attended the Foundation for Beacon Schools meeting, um, I don't know, last week. And I was really excited to hear that they continue, they're continuing to support the, um, tuition support for the DCC students. That's really great of them. And, um, I don't know, I don't know if we shouted that to the wind enough last year that they did that. It was so amazing and helpful. Um, they have a gala in October. And it is on October twenty-fourth. So if you want to support them anymore, you can attend the gala. It's going to be at the Roundhouse. I also had a meeting today. Um, this is part of the Duchess County School Board Association with Laura and Jonathan Jacobson and Gully, is it Stanford or Sanford?
Sanford.
Sanford, um, from Bosie's. And it was a good meeting. And we really just kept saying how, um, how hard this budget season was for us and that we really want to partner with him to, um, to push, push that news and how, you know, really like how it affected us, how it affected our planning and what would happen to us next year if we received the same or worse cuts than, um, that are already being sort of threatened. We also talked about what's going on with the Rockefeller Center and the redoing of the Foundation Aid Formula and how that seems to be like not a very good faith process. And we asked him if he would be willing to host sort of like a public hearing for stakeholders because they, they made all of the meetings in the furthest points of New York State so that no one can go to them.
Nothing is near us.
So that maybe we could have something more local and collect data that way. And he seemed very open to that. We have a very short timeline. The deadline is to submit testimony is September sixth. So hopefully we can pull something together around that. But if we can't, I think that we should definitely, as a district, send a letter. And I think we could join with the Duchess County School Board Association, uh, around a letter as well. And, you know, in, in terms of the cell phone, um, I was on the policy committee last year and we've had some really good discussions about it. And we had the principal come in and, and talk to us about it from the middle school. And that was, I think, really important to hear from him about it. And I do feel like it's a, um, you know, it's a situation where, uh, I think Kristin, you've always said this, if you, if, if no one's happy, you're doing it right. So I think we're going right in the right direction. But it is something that's really important. And, and I, you know, I, I definitely think that we need to have something that is very clear, clearly communicated to students, to staff, to teachers. And, and that, you know, sort of minimally, they cannot be out in classrooms because it's such a distraction for kids. But I, yeah, I appreciate the input. And I think that we, as a board, it would be good for us. We haven't really had an open discussion about it. So, um, maybe we can talk about how to do that.
Incorporate it into an agenda, yeah. Yeah. I mean, yeah, would it be possible to, would that discussion sort of be part of the, the August nineteenth meeting naturally?
I think it would make perfect sense for that to be.
Okay.
I, the, the code of conduct changes, the way we're writing them, uh, would allow us flexibility with whatever restriction we do with cell phones. Like, you don't want to write a code of conduct that minutely describes, like, you know, exactly what you're doing because this covers kids who are, um, eleven years old in sixth grade to eighteen-year-olds, you know, here in the high school. So, so the, the code, the changes to the code itself, I don't think are going to be necessarily like the most controversial part of this or whatever word you want to use. I, I think the, you know, what we put into practice will be where, you know, people will have different opinions. And I think that could be a discussion on the nineteenth and also the twenty-sixth and, you know, at other times of the year. Whatever, you know, what, what we're, um, whatever it is that we implement, we also want to be finding ways to monitor it throughout the year. So I don't also see it as like, this is the last time we ever talk about cell phones is August twenty-sixth or August nineteenth. You know, I, I don't know the best way to track the data on this. So we're kind of, you know, that's what we're delving into a little bit this week, but.
Which data?
What's that? Like, like, uh, student, uh, issues with phones, you know, like that sort of thing, like.
Is it something that you can, I mean, you've spoken to the middle school principal and the AP, I'm sure. So I think that, like, my concern about this is we've had a lot of energy coming at us about this issue for months now. And I'm sure, what I'm hearing from people is like, we have people whose kids are rising, like, sixth graders. So there's already a feeling of like, that general nervousness about entering the middle school and like what that means. And so I, I'm worried that this is all going to get sort of like tied together. And I think we really need to start, like, like hearing that feedback. Because I bet the administrators have a point of view. And I bet that, I think what's happening a little bit is that we're on our, I know you've been working on it. Like, I just feel like that's a lot of, kind of like one-sided pressure on the school to be like, and then you're going to figure this all out and it's all going to be figured out. But, you know, like, I, I don't know if the AI policy is being driven by, like, what, that article in the journal about the nude images generated about a student on AI. But the only reason why they caught that kid is because he logged into the school IP. So like, they were able to track him. But prior to that, there was no, this was all happening at home and like, nobody could catch him. And there's also like something kind of unprecedented about the nature of it. So there was nothing in the code of conduct. There's really nothing. You know, that's almost like a freedom of speech issue. And he was a minor. There's a lot of complexity in that issue. And what this woman said tonight about norms was, I think, an important discussion that we should also be having as well. Uh, like, how this does sort of ladder up to the kind of community we want to have. And I think that, like, I'm sure that many discipline problems are being, I mean, I've heard it since I've been on the board, that a lot of stuff that happens outside of school, mostly on phones, shows up in the school. So I'm sure principals have a point of view, too, that they might want to say, it would be great if, if you do give your child a phone. Because we can't control if somebody gives their child a phone. Like, these are things that we would love to see happen at home, too. Because it's outside of the policy room. But I feel like we have to have a dialogue about that.
Yeah, no, no. I, I, uh, I, I think the best thing I can say is that I really don't think this is something that ends the conversation or doesn't open us up to really talking about the issue. I think it's a starting point, which we'll share and we'll kind of work through in August. But this is, and, and then, you know, the other part of this is you have the governor saying stuff, which I don't totally know where she's going with that. It doesn't, um, you know. So that's that part we're watching, too. But, yeah, I, I mean, just Kristin, just to speak to the, one of the things you said. It's oftentimes, um, in our conversations about this, the bigger issues we have are, um, after long weekends, snow days, things like that, where it, it's more like the outside-of-school use of the device tends to be the thing that's the bigger time-consuming or damaging, uh, thing. It doesn't mean that everyone's behaving perfectly with them when they have them in school, but that tends to be the bigger issue for us is the use of stuff outside of school. So if you ask our administrators, um, that's probably more on their mind. Our teachers want to be able to do their job and teach, you know, and they don't want to be having to tell kids to put their phone away ten times a class. So we want to deal with that, too. But, yeah, this is a super complex thing. I, I'm, I'm not at all naive enough to think I'm going to send the letter out and it sort of ends it or makes people feel one way or the other. But it's a starting point. That's the way we're sort of viewing it.
Okay.
So.
Can I just ask to request that before the board meeting, that we have that documentation, that we get the information or the changes for the policy or, and or like any information that the policy committee had, like, a week in advance. So we have time to digest it and stuff, just because it's the summer and people are going away and stuff. So if we get it, like, when the board docs comes out on a Friday and we have a meeting on Monday, some people don't have time to digest that. And I think it's important that all the board members have time to, like, digest that. So if we could get it like a week or more.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But it wouldn't be a week and more of a meeting on the twelfth of August.
That's policy.
There's already a sample policy for the cell phone and it's a paragraph. It's just, you know, so straightforward.
Very broad.
Definitely, you know, you should get it in advance.
Can, um, just to go back to time, timeline, so we have the meeting nineteenth and twenty-sixth. Is it realistic to think that any change would take place September one? Or are we thinking about, I'm just, I'm just thinking this is late. I mean, a lot of the other school districts have done things, you know, spring into early summer. We're, and, and not to anyone's fault. I'm not blaming, there's no blame here. I'm just thinking of timeframe for implementation, you know, looking beginning of school year, mid-school year. I just didn't, I just didn't know what people are thinking.
Well, yes, we're for sure prepared to do, uh, at minimum, a classroom restriction at the first day of school.
Okay, so that's, okay. Oh, very good. This wasn't sure.
So there's a mini-policy right now that, not mini-policy, but there's a policy right now that was worked on that will get shared with us prior to the nineteenth.
Yeah, I mean, we could share it tonight, what, what we have.
Yeah, and if our lawyers could send us.
Need to dig up what the latest one.
I mean, we've done this for thorny things in the past where we've had comparable policies from other schools shared by our lawyers. So we can at least look at, I mean, and if, as a part of your network, you can find out what's working well, what's not from other admins.
And then do we have, and there's the poli-, with this policy that's already written right now, is that the changes that's in the conduct are from this policy that's already created?
The changes in the code of conduct.
They, they're, they would, yeah, they're reflecting the changes from the policy. Because we didn't have.
And the AI stuff.
The.
And other things, too.
So we'd be able to see the policy for the phone and.
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct change.
So we can say.
That's what I'm asking for, is all that information so we can digest it.
The, the way we're framing the changes to the code of conduct, um, is that, um, and it, we're writing it this way. So we, not that we would, we would obviously inform the public, work it through with the board. But we want, we want something that's not so, like I said before, not so incredibly specific. So what we're laying, what, what we're sort of laying a foundation for the code of conduct is, is the students have to put phones away into designated areas as directed by school staff, period. If they don't comply with that, one of the consequences would be that they lose the right to have their phone in school for some amount of time. But to the person who spoke and to some board comments, like, we're also not putting into that that we're like searching kids for their phones every day or that kind of thing. It's, it's, it's addressing it if it becomes an issue. But part of the thing that we heard from the teachers is whatever it is that we do, they, they need a response from administrators, like, immediately. They, they don't want to, like, write five referrals about a phone or something and not have any follow-up. So that's something that we're working through to make sure we're really clear about as well. But like, that, that's what we're trying to lay a foundation for. Like, I'm not trying to be mysterious here, like, that, you know, that we can tell a student to put a phone into a designated area. So that, the most extreme version of that is the yonder pouch. Unless, I, I don't say extreme, but like, the, the most restrictive way is the yonder pouch. You could also put it into like a designated area in a classroom. So that's, that's what we're working through. We wanted to, we were thinking of updating the community on what we were thinking before board meetings. So like, I can also rethink the way we want to do this. I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to pull a fast one with the board. The way, the way the meetings were scheduled and part of that was due to some of my scheduling stuff this summer, causes a little bit of, like, that it's not all maybe perfectly connected. But, um, we want to eliminate the distraction for teachers, uh, and students in school. But we also know that we've got to take some steps to do that.
I mean, do we have that at the show, like, how many kids are getting in trouble for, for cell phones and stuff? Like, that we're addressing it besides the public? Like, do we know, like, kids are being, getting much attention? They're being sent to the office, having their phones removed?
The feedback, I, I, I think the primary driver for this for us, um, is feedback from our teachers. That they, they've really asked for something to be done in the classroom. It's honestly much less disciplined data and it's much more like, I need to be able to do my job better. And so, so that's what we're working through.
Well, and also because the things that happen are not like always overt. Like, if a kid is napping in class and someone snaps a picture of them and they send it to everybody, which happens all the time. Or I've seen some pretty upsetting TikTok accounts, like bullying other kids, like, and you can report it. And then you, you know, the administrator has to deal with it. And it's, you know, I've seen TikTok videos made inside the school. Or, you know, we all know about like when kids video fights and send it to each other. Like, these things happen. It's like, we've, you know, given a device to people whose brains aren't fully formed and they act accordingly. And it shouldn't be like super shocking. But I don't think it's been like, I think it's, it's, there's a two-hander here. And I think that, yeah, like, if we're hearing from teachers that they don't want the distraction in class, like, that's obviously speaking to that very important issue of.
Both, both Brian and Cory have been working with their, uh, teacher leadership groups and just their teachers in general, just kind of getting that feedback. And they were getting it the, kind of the last month or two of the school year. I, I don't, you know, to, to me, the, the primary thing we want to address in terms of like, uh, policy is helping eliminate the distraction in the classroom. The educational piece, which was spoken about in public comment, a lot of you have brought up, is, is, you know, equally important, more important, um, and harder to do. And, and I, I think, you know, the family education piece, um, is big. And also, um, trying to talk it through with, uh, our students. And then also, one of the things we're working through is, like I mentioned, our age range. Eleven-year-olds are a lot different than eighteen-year-olds. And so we're also trying to take that into account a little bit, too. But our teachers definitely, um, are asking for some help with this, for sure.
I think, I, I do think it's also important to, to know that, like, when you talk to your kids, they're having experiences. Like, my son, uh, over the weekend, um, he, we, we were at Ron's and there was a fellow student there. And he was, he was like, look at the way he's holding his phone. I know he's taking a picture of me right now. And he was afraid. And it's because it had happened with this student in school. And so, and that really left an impression on me. It's like, there's, there's this whole subculture happening that is invisible to the adults, but it is there. And I think it's, it is like toward what you're saying and what you're saying, Kristin. Like, there is the triage piece. There's like getting the phones out of their hands during class piece. But there's also the education piece, which is like, like, like you said, in a way, more important. Because this is like, no matter what we do with this tool, it's in their lives forever.
Right.
And like, this is our time to like teach them how to be responsible with this. And that, you know, we have this set of sort of attributes and abilities that we want our students to graduate with. This is a huge part of that. Like, being a good digital citizen, being a good citizen means like knowing how to treat people in the real world and in, in the digital world. And I, I, I definitely don't want us to lose sight of that education piece while we're taking care of the triage piece. Right. And I think that's where like the honest discussion comes up, like, because I, you know, I really appreciated what the parents were saying about, you know, they'd be willing to be part of that education piece. But, you know, I've, I've read all the academic articles. I've read Jonathan Haidt's book. Like, I've been reading about this stuff. I've had, I, I think that any of us who have kids on the older side of this could probably provide more of an education of the reality of the broader part of this discussion. So it's like, there's definitely the policy about school and how it should be handled in school. But we also are a diverse district in a variety of ways. And that means that these, these phones will be in kids' hands. And some kids in elementary school are getting them. So like, we could have the discussion and talk about it, but we're not going to be able to stop a parent from making their own decision and doing what they will with that kid. But, you know, just like, there were conversations around, I mean, I feel like the sort of anti-bullying things are always like toothless and not necessarily useful to kids. But I think that, like, having, um, some sort of level appropriate digital literacy education at every grade and like, and really explaining, you know, when my daughter wanted to get social media, is it the social? What's, there's a social dilemma and a social experiment. What were the, what's the documentary where they, they explain how an algorithm works? And so, because I didn't want to fight with her about it, I was doing this thing that was keeping her different than her friends. I was like, watch this documentary, watch it together and we'll talk about it afterwards. And at twelve, she came away saying, I think I want to know what I think before somebody tells me what I should be thinking. And it was like, done. From that point, it scared her. Like, the idea that some, and then watching kids, and they do it in the documentary of like, being on their phone and being geolocated and not talking to somebody they could be talking to, but rather caught up in something that would keep you, your eyeball on something and keep you engaged. And it's like, I actually think if we give kids some good information, just like, I mean, that's how smoking sensation, cessation happened, was educating kids in schools about smoking. Kids some good information, just like, I mean, that's how smoking sensation, cessation happened was educating kids in schools about smoking and then. We have a whole generation that did not smoke as much as prior generations, largely because they were just made aware of the dangers of it. So I think that there's real opportunities here.
I agree with what you're saying, I'm just a little questioning, I guess, the, the timeline, so if. Matt, you were thinking of sending something out next week, so if something goes out next week. Then I guess my, what are we workshopping on the nineteenth, I guess is my question, or should we workshop then send, you know. Because once something goes out, my thinking is that, that's to, to parents going to be, that's it, right, there, like, if I got something from the superintendent. You know, this is.
And then they're gonna come to that meeting on the nineteenth.
Well, well, that's fine, that, that's, you know, that's what happens and I'm not saying that's not it, but I just, I didn't, I, I just wanna make sure we're not. Putting the cart before the horse type of thing here, so maybe we should, I, I just don't know, I, I don't know what, what the best way is to go about, I'm just trying to think of how to do this.
Right.
For the best of all of us, I don't know.
No, it's a good point.
Cause the nineteenth is, that's also late for, you know, the school's starting, so I don't know.
I think it's good to see something in writing as a starting point, for some reason, I just feel like there's been a lot of talk, but I, I think we need something in our hands to chew on.
Right. So that would be after the policy, prior to the nineteen.
Everybody or the, the, the whole community?
Or at least the board for sure, if we're gonna have a discussion.
This letter is that it, it talks about plans for, to start the fall, like how the fall will look. And how you will decide if that is working, is that kind of the, the basis for that?
But then why are we discussing how the fall's gonna look?
Well, I think.
I mean, if there's policies.
Some feedback.
There's procedures, I get that, and operations, right? But if the policy is driving the operations and we're saying this is the operations, and then we'll talk about the policy.
No, no, I, I, I was just clarifying. What the, I mean, I, I think Eric brings up a good point is, it, with, what is the order of operations here, like if this is. If this is something that's gonna be driven by the policy, however, you know, and, and I have read the policy. It, it basically says there will be no phones in the classroom. So, you know, I, I guess in my mind, I felt like. Whatever that ends up saying exactly, if that's sort of like the main idea behind it, that that policy will be approved by the board, I, I. Not saying it would be approved unanimously, but I assumed it would pass. But, so I think the question is like, how involved is the, the, the order is still a little bit off. But if, if it's like, the policy is this and the implementation is that.
I mean, could the communication be as simple as if the board approves this policy, then this is the plan moving forward?
Why are we rushing it, to have something in by September first?
I think, I think that there's.
First read, second read, or are we waving a read?
But I actually, I think what you, from this point, it feels rushed, but we actually have started getting these emails, when?
No, I.
Been talking about.
I understand the email part and I know that the policy's been working on it, but nothing's come from policy to the board.
Right.
That's what I'm asking for, if we're gonna have this discussion and we're looking to do something, I think the whole board needs to have that information. So they could have a good dialogue conversation, because my views may change based on what I hear, the policies reads, what the code of conduct reads. And so forth, and I need time to digest that and then maybe look at the resources that people have sent and, you know, do my own stuff, like.
Yeah, I agree with you.
That part needs to happen and, but if we're putting the cart before the horse, then. I know as a new board member, I'd be like, oh, this is happening, why should I say anything? You know, as a veteran board member, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say it anyway.
Well, I, I think what I'm sensing is that, I think that like, we continue to get communication that. Somehow reflects that we somehow do not understand that this is an issue of concern and so. I think we need to communicate that it is an issue of concern, that we are taking it very seriously and that we are moving forward. With something and that there's a, there are, there is kind of like, yeah, like we do need a roadmap for how we proceed.
The letter could be that the board is gonna be discussing this at the board, future board meetings as a whole board.
I think a way to deal with it, and I, I, I'm not meaning for everyone to get their calendars out, maybe that's the wrong thing, would be to, to move a board meeting up. That's the way to deal with this, move policy up and move the first board meeting in August up.
No, I'm just laughing because I'm like.
That's the way, like, I. I, I, in part of the summer calendar stuff was me, so I'm not, when I say this, I'm not blaming, I was. Trying to work it around like a, kind of a weird calendar. And so that would be, I could talk to Flora about that tomorrow, but that would be the way to do it, like you have a. Policy meeting in the next ten days, you have a board meeting on August fifth.
Only part I'm concerned about, if it's not a planned board meeting, I know people, like, I made plans around board meetings to be here. And then if we're adding something and then I can't make it, but a quorum is there.
Right.
Right, it's like a shot in the foot, like, okay, there's a quorum and I get it, you could have the meeting legally and I plan my vacations around. The board to be there and now I can't be to this ad meeting and I know they could be added, but for this special topic or a specific topic.
We have, al- also just in the interest of like the nine people to line up, like, if we have something to respond to, like you said. Something that we could actually engage with and have, like, something to, to give feedback on, I think that would be. Helpful and if we moved up a meeting, but somebody had the opportunity to comment on things, then that would still involve their input, like. It, it's like, we have to sort of decide, like, is this about getting this done, like, as soon as possible or is it about? Like, you know, I, I think we've just.
Should be about getting it right, right, I mean, that's the ultimate goal, is try and get it right.
Never about getting it wrong, but it's like, I think that, I'm just saying that we.
I think it is important to remember though, it's incredibly broad, because I think we're being very realistic that this is a start. And we have to understand how it looks in the real world and how it works in the real world and we may have to adjust and discuss again after that. And I don't, I, I, I don't think this first time around, it's like, it's an incredibly. Sort of detailed and very specific policy by, you know, and that's by design. Like, it's very broad.
But there's issues with it being really broad as well, there could be, I'm saying, I don't know.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I almost feel like if that were the case, I don't know we would understand that until. It was implemented, do you know what I mean?
I would, I would want legal advice on that as well.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, I just mean like. I do think that.
Cause I'm just playing devil's advocate, I could be that parent that my kid has a phone, he's gonna have it on him, you're gonna suspend him, go for it.
Right.
I'm gonna challenge it. That will happen.
Right, yeah.
And then, oh, you're telling me that he's wasting class and we're not paying attention, but yet you're removing him from the class because of it.
To me and that.
The purpose is just to keep the phones in the classroom, just not on their person, so they'd come into class and then drop it off in like a.
Couch designated area. High school, not all classes, but they do that in high school, they have like a designated area where they come in and put them, and then.
Some, some room, some.
Not everybody, right, and then, you know, it was very interesting to kind of walk through that process last year at the meet the teacher night because. Some teachers were very honest in saying like, removing this, because it's, these are kids that went through the pandemic, this has been like next to them for. Five or six years, so they were like, they could have it on their desk in a, there was a clear pencil box. They said just being able to see it was reassuring for them and they didn't have it out during class and it was just there, so they weren't like, where's my phone, where's my phone? I think that's, it's different now, like, these, you know, kids have maybe been out in the world a little bit more than they were during that time and maybe this group is graduating. But it was interesting to see like one teacher had like a shoe rack kind of thing, soft shoe rack and everybody got assigned a number and then he had, he was genius. He has a charging station with a bajillion cords, which is what all these kids wanted and they, and you know, they're high school, so they're, they have jobs, they have things where, you know, they're. They're using that for different reasons, but they would come in, put their phone in and charge and his class was also incredibly engaging and nobody. Looked for their phone in any way, I think that there's like. Yeah, there's different solutions for sure, we don't want them out in class, we don't want them distracting, we don't want kids filming each other or fearing paranoid. I think we need to uncover some of those other things and that could take longer and I don't know if that gets folded into the policy, but I think that. I, I think it'd be probably better if kids had them in their lockers, you know?
I mean, that, yeah, that, but I know a whole like subgroup of kids who don't use their lockers and they can't because they can't get to class.
Right, cause that's a, that's a whole different, that, then that goes to another structural issue, I think there are some structural issues that.
And the other part too is what about the teachers, is the teacher gonna be able to take their phone out and put it on the desk and so forth, like?
I think this is all sort of pointing to, like, there's a discussion to be had, so if we're looking at like. The right order of doing things, right, okay, so we want to be able to have a discussion. About the policy and also about the code of conduct and we, ideally, we wanna have those discussions at the same time, right? And we wanna approve these things at the same time, am I right about that? So, so we were looking at. The twelfth to get the policy. Finalized and then the nineteenth to talk about both the policy and the code of conduct.
And I don't send anything out.
Right, you don't send anything out, or, and then the nineteenth to do, to do the code of conduct and then. Ideally, we're getting, we are in agreement and squared away by the time school starts, so that what you're communicating next week is what our plan is. As a board to finalize these plans.
Okay.
Right?
Alright.
Yeah, and then, and then if people wanna come and offer a comment about it, because I think that it's. I, it was interesting to have a different perspective tonight, cause it did raise a bunch of things that I hadn't thought of at all, but I also do know that we. This is a district where there are a lot of working parents, where there might be single parent households, like I hadn't thought about that idea. Of, you know. I know that, I know all of this, I've read all the articles, so I know all of it gets answered in those articles about the yonder pouch and that, that's made a world of difference and I don't doubt that. That information is correct, I just think that. We kind of need to have, we haven't had the conversation, so we need to hear from people and have the conversation and then proceed incorporating that feedback. But the, I think for me tonight, that piece that was very important was after all the work we've done around. You know, the diversity in our district, the idea of like. A search is, is something that does concern me a lot.
I also think, I understand the part the board is deciding on is the policy and the code of conduct, but I think it'd be really helpful to hear more about the implementation. And understanding that that's the executive's like role, but a lot of these questions sound like they probably won't get answered by the policy. Potentially, but it's still a matter for like the public and I think the board to understand what this will feel like for students and parents. So that we can help them have clarity, if the policy ends up being very vague, then the, the questions will be about the implementation, so. I understand that we're not deciding about implementation, but I think it'd be helpful to hear.
Yeah, no.
The result of all these conversations that you're having.
I'm more worried about implementation, the kid that gets pat, not patted down, but like the woman said, his search, the kid who. The teachers like put the phone away, but their phone's either in their bookbag or their pocket. And it's like, well, I know you have, I know you have a phone, like that second guess, that second question, cause I be, you're not my kid, like, no. There are classes where, for the teachers who tell the students to put their phones away, that I can say that my kid does. And then, but then the whole time she tells me, I'm like watching to make sure my phone is still there, to make sure no one has taken it, right, like. And then, then there's times, and I know, cause I'm the worst parent, right, because I'm the parent that texts my, my daughter and she'll text me back.
Right.
But then I got another daughter who's still gonna be here during this time, who won't text me back because she knows and I have to remember that's that kid, like. Why am I texting her, she's in class, she's definitely not gonna, and there are kids like that who just won't, who, who know, it's the education, it's me telling my kid. You know, like, if this all passed, right, and, and, and there's this policy and there's this whatever, now I have, I will educate my child and, and, and tell, but I'm also educated on choices.
Right.
You walk through that door with that phone and don't put it down or whatever, these are the choices, these are the consequences, these are, you know, whatever it is, but I. I don't see how this vague policy or whatever policy, it's gonna have to take time, because. We're gonna have to then, I'm all about data, we're gonna have to pull real data to see how many people got in trouble and why they got in trouble and how they got in trouble.
Right.
With this phone situation.
See, I mean, we had, we had some, we've had real world things where there was a fuzziness and the perception was that it was. Applied unevenly and so that was the something that we'd have to really think about and also. I have a student with an IEP, when she was starting sixth grade, part of the reason why she didn't get a phone is because of the Speechify app, so I remember saying like. You know, you're allowed to have your phone, like you can have it and you won't be weird and, and then everybody had their phone, so it was actually not something that, I think we had a policy. That said they couldn't have their phone, so I had it written into her IEP and then it was.
Cause there's some good things that come with it, right, like, some teachers do use it and allow the students to go on it to find certain things or to do research or whatever, like. There's that, I forget the word that the, the public person had said, like. Some of it data, like just that, that, the, the education of, of how you can use it and it's, it's, you can use it in your classes, you can use it in certain classes to do research. Just to, to do whatever, but I get that there are kids that are distracted by and who, who, to take advantage of it, right, like, then it always goes back to the. Why do, why do the good, not the good kids, but the kids who follow the rules have to suffer from the kids who don't follow the rules? And then we gotta dig deeper, right, why are they not following the rules, right, is there more to it than just, are they bored and are they bored because they're actually advanced and they're bored in their class? Are they, whatever, you know?
I also think, we've been talking a lot about like kids getting in trouble, but from my perspective, the real reason to consider this is student wellbeing, so. Sure, we can measure how many kids get in trouble, but are kids, like, are they less anxious after the phones go away, like that, to me, that's the reason. To consider it is student wellbeing and distraction, so if the kid's getting sent to the office is five, ten percent of kids, like a really small subset. So if we frame it like the ninety percent of kids are getting punished for that, that's not good, but I think some of the research shows those ninety percent of kids can actually be. More focused, happier, more present, less anxious. So i- is that the reason why we're doing it, from my perspective, is the, a reason to consider it and if so, we need like be explicit about that and figure out how we're gonna measure. If it does actually have a beneficial impact on, on students.
I, to that point then, we should all be working from an advocacy standpoint to age gate social media. Because this is what's happened to us, like, once you start getting the, the onboard thing, one of the things we all saw during the, which is that in the newspaper. Is that there were kids, like two kids in one school district upstate, who killed themselves because of revenge porn within like, you know, this was during the pandemic. There's definitely like an increase of kids in eating disorder programs, there's been an increase in anxiety, like, the, all of these things are like falling on us to. Figure out and one of the conversations that happened over and over again with other parents was like. I don't wanna, like, I don't wanna say no to Instagram because, you know, everyone else is on it, so it's like, it is something where, like. We do need to be pushing out too, like, because that's where a lot of the harm and anxiety comes, is those, is social media and how it. And how that algorithm gets into those kids' brains and what it does to them at a very vulnerable time, so if we're ta- really talking about wellbeing, we need to make a push around that too.
I feel like, yeah, there's a lot here and there's a conversation that's gonna need to be had on the nineteenth, so. Why don't we, why don't we say, after the policy meeting, which is on the, on the twelfth, right? Do you think it would be possible for us to have? You know, the, the polit- the drafted policy and the, and the code of conduct changes on the thirteenth?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can give all of these things as drafts to the board probably by Monday. Of next week, I mean.
Great.
We. We're trying to, you know, to what Chris said, we're, we're really trying to think through all of like the intricacies of. What this might look like in a school and also knowing that it's going to look different at the high school than the middle school, like it just. Is. So, you know, we've been spending, we've been kind of like towards the end of the year, we were. Getting a lot of input from teachers and then we've been trying to craft something that we think is at least like some sort of starting point for this, so. So we'll have things ready to share very soon, I, I'll get a sense. Tomorrow, Flora, like how soon it could be, but I, I, it's pretty soon, cause a lot of it's already kind of done. Some of it isn't and that's what I needed this week for, so, but I, I totally get the timeline part. And I, I don't, I don't think what we're going to be recommending, I think that nineteenth and the twenty-sixth is totally fine. Like, I, I, I don't think it's going to be. A hugely radical thing from the start, I, I think what we're all talking about. In different ways is like how complex this is and this. and this is just sort of the beginning steps down this path. So I get that part too. But, um, yeah, we, we will share it. I'll talk to you about when.
Okay.
So pre that policy meeting, when we have the policy meeting, and we're ready to roll on the 19th.
Okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll change how I'm talking to the community. I'll run that past you, just in terms of like the board's role in it, and, you know.
That sounds good.
And, and we're not, you know, we're, like, we, we really do, when we approach stuff, we really try to think through a lot of like the, the implementation part. So we can really speak about that on the 19th. Like, we're really happy to get into that, like.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, because we can't do that.
All right. Well, it almost seems beside the point now, but it's time for me to give my comments. I, I just, I wanted to echo that I'm really happy for Chris and Levon to join us. It does feel good to have nine on board again. And, you know, thank you for deciding to serve. It's, it's a, it's a big responsibility and a big deal. So thank you, guys. This past week slash weekend, I went to the NISBA Leadership and Education Conference. There were some interesting panels, including one on AI. There was also a teacher recruitment panel, and they had a couple of guys on there who had done some statewide research on teacher recruitment and retention, specifically in small city districts and rural districts. I have both of their reports. I'm gonna share them with everyone, just because they're interesting. And I think that it would be, it would be a good reference for everyone who wants to, you know, thumb through the 200 pages of text. But honestly, like, there's some good nuggets of information in there. A few things that they, that they said, which really stood out to me, was that there are 567,000 fewer teachers now in the US than before the pandemic, which was a frightening statistic, and that approximately 35% of teachers in New York State will be eligible to retire in the next five years. So this is definitely, you know, something that we should be thinking about. There was also a, a panel on sort of partnering with students for, around academic achievement, but also sort of closing some of the gaps that are holding them back from achievement. And there was a lot of talk about mental health, and there were talks about new school-based outpatient mental health clinics that are popping up around the state, and that was pretty interesting. And, you know, I, that's something that we've talked about on and off, and it's definitely something I would love for us to learn more about as a district, and just to see what's possible. I know that there is one school district near us, and the county, the district is escaping me now, who started their, you know, their basically community-based clinics, health clinics for students. And now they've added a mental health component, and I would love for them to, to come and talk to us about that.
That was Weeby Talk.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, and they, they seem to be having some great success. And I would, I would love to, to hear more about that. I think that's all from me for today. That's, that'll do. So, moving on. All right. So, moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have pulled from the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Go for it.
12.05 E27, 12.06 F16, 12.12, 12.14.
Okay. It was 12.05 E, you said?
E27.
E27, thank you. And then 12.06 F16, 12.12, 12.14?
12.12 and 12.14. You could do 12.05 and 12.06 together.
Okay. Together. All right, any others?
I have 12.15 O, winter 1, and 12.15 O, spring 16.
Roger that.
I was like, what is he talking about?
I think I ran it wrong. I was trying to determine what I was doing there with that.
And is it okay for me to do those together?
Yeah, you can do it together.
Oh, my gosh. There's something I don't know I'm supposed to be doing in this moment. Okay, yeah, anymore? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve 10.01 through 15.07? Less 12.05 E27, 12.06 F16, 12.12, 12.14, 12.15 O, winter 1, 12.15 O, spring 16?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Kristen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I am also in favor, passes 9 to 0. I'm sorry, I didn't ask if there were any comments or questions. I'm assuming there are not.
Sorry, who motioned?
I did.
Elena motioned.
Yes. Okay. Can I get a motion for 12.05 E27 and 12.06 F16?
So moved.
Kristen, second?
Second.
Second, Meredith. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'm also in favor, passes 9-0. Oh, wait, what? What did I do?
I abstained.
You, oh, one abstention, sorry, sorry, one abstention. Okay. So passes 8-0. Okay, can I get a motion for 12.12?
So moved.
Anthony, second?
Second.
Meredith, comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just like to amend it to make sure that it's, instead of ISME, it should be IMSE. So it's for the Institute of Multisensory Education, instead of the, they just mixed the M and S. So just to correct, correct that. And I did have another question about it. Is that taking place? I know that we did, when we had the curriculum update, we were talking about letters, and this is a certification for reading with IMSE. Is this a different route, or is it in conjunction? So it's different than the letters piece? Okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion for 12.14 as amended?
So moved.
Kristen, second?
Second.
Second by everyone? Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm also in favor, passes 9-0. Can I get a motion for 12.15 O, winter 1, 12.15 O, spring 16? Uh, second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, any abstentions? One abstention. I'm also in favor, passes 8-0. Can I get a motion to, during the meeting?
No, you forgot one.
What did I forget?
One, four.
1.14.
Dang it, we were so close. Um, wait, 12.14?
Correct.
Oh, I thought it had already done that. Can I get a motion for 12.14?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I just wanted to get clarification. I know in the description, it says appoint the following teachers at a rate of $50 for an hour for five hours. But there's administrators on there. Are they also getting compensated, or is it part of their regular work?
Part of their regular work. The, the appointment says appoint the following teachers.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that those administrators.
It's just for the teachers.
Yep.
Okay, asked and answered? Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? I'm also in favor, passes 9-0. Okay, now, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Thank you, Kristen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm also in favor. Meeting is adjourned.